You stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Raven.
Here.
Commissioner Phipps?
Here.
And Commissioner, Mayor Hall?
Here. Consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and being acted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Does anyone want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February the 20th, 2024, and bills and payroll for the last half of February 2024. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox and... Roll call.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Raven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that have not been identified on this agenda, but the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentations to three minutes to avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Is there anybody present tonight that would like to address the council?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. You'll be later, I think.
Yes.
Maybe. Anybody online like to address the council? Okay, hearing none. We'll go, we'll start with new business. And I move to adopt special ordinance number 2024 granting a variance for the intensity of use in rear yard setback for the property located at 2112 Champagne Avenue to allow for the reconstruction of a garage and for the setback to match the existing setback. Petitioner is David Paul Jr. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Raven, and any discussion, any comments on this?
Again, this is just, David has a garage that was an old garage that was built more for like a Model A car. He is, it's an old brick building. It needs work, repairs, so he is asking to rebuild it, tear it down, build a new garage in the same location. Would be the north setback. Is about approximately a foot or so off the property line. He wants to keep that. His neighbors has the same setback. The neighbor to the north is his parents, so, you know, they're not having any issues with that. But the new garage would be a little bit longer. It'll extend a little bit closer to Champagne Avenue, but not near, I mean, still not to the front of his house. So, no, no issues on the west side, no issues on the south side towards the street. He just wants the variance for the same setback on the north property line, which is...
Good. Say. Good.
The planning commission, when they presented it, just to get, oh, he's done a marvelous job fixing up the property. I mean, it just looks, you know, the sidewalk in front, it's got a steel road. And he's done a wonderful job. I didn't think I'd see that picture, but just wanted to recognize that he's done a wonderful job for that property.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Ready for roll call?
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Raven.
Yeah.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. I move to approve Council Decision Request 2024-2452, authorize the employment of Pierce Farmer as a probationary patrol officer with the Mattoon Police Department effective May the 5th, 2024. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen, and any comments?
Hey, Pierce is here with us tonight, and he is a lifelong resident of Manchun, a graduate of Manchun High School. Played tennis there, went on to play tennis at Cascaspi College in Centralia, where he got his associates in criminal justice and was, and he still is currently doing some landscaping construction. So, he got this job, is that right?
I guess so.
So, he will be replacing Casey Alexander, who is set to retire a little bit later this year. We're trying to, what we have, got him to sit in the Maybeth Academy. So, we're here a little early today, and that's why the hire date actually on down the road. But he's got a lot to do and purchase, get ready for it. Thank you.
Needless to say, you're joining a great team. Your group has a great commissioner. That was, that was, that was a joke. That was just a joke, Sandy. But you do have a good, you do have a good group, and I know that the chief did not tell you about a speech, but if you do want to say anything, now is the time to say something. Do you have anything you'd like to say? You can say something good about the chief or... No?
Really started this opportunity, and it's always been my great to say, oh, this town kind of contribute more to this town. I've always loved it.
Good. Good.
I was always writing my papers about working in that community. And I was just kind of crazy that, you know, the time is here already. Already got the pick the job, and it's just, you know, time flies, and I'm really excited.
Good. Good deal.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any other comments anybody has? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Raven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Welcome aboard officially.
Yes.
I motioned, I motioned to approve Council Decision Request 2024-2453, authorizing the solicitation of bids for the roadway portion of the sports complex, contingent upon the approval of the final plan and specifications by the Illinois Department of Transportation.
Now, a second to that motion.
Second.
Mr. Cox, and any comments on this?
We do have the approval from the Illinois Department of Transportation, so we did get that, I think, yesterday, so...
Okay, great timing.
Yep.
All right. Any other comments? Your roll call, please.
Commissioner Phipps?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Raven?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Motion to approve Council Decision Request 2024-2454, authorizing the employment of Craig Hennus as water treatment plant lab director with a base annual compensation of $64,292.80 effective March 18, 2024, pending a successful drug testing and background check.
And a second on that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments on this one? Anybody?
I'll say a little bit about Craig. Craig is also a hometown boy, lives, lives in Mattoon, with Mattoon Schools. Think he played tennis as well. He is the assistant tennis coach, assistant men's soccer coach as well. So, he works in the evenings over in Charleston right now. So, he is glad to be on days and, or glad that he would be on days, we would get this approved, and he'll be a good hire. He has all the qualifications that we need for the lab director, so...
Okay, great.
Then he had to have four years' experience before he could take his...
I'd say license.
Yeah.
So... And then he asked us to have a bachelor's degree or to be the lab director, and he has that, so...
Perfect.
Yep.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yeah.
Commissioner Raven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Motion to approve Council Decision Request 2024-2455, awarding the bid of $101,965 from Industrial Mechanical Incorporated for the Mattoon Police Department Chiller, parentheses, cooling tower replacement, and authorizing the mayor to sign the bid proposal.
And a second to that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments on that?
Again, there, his bid was a little different with a, a different type of component inside the chiller. However, he is going to get the same component as what the other ones bid as well, but the same price. Talked with Mark and I from Industrial Services, and then I also talked with the gentleman from Sycamore, and just making sure we got everything correct. And it sounds, sounds like we do, and we should get a good product. A good mix, so...
As I understand, his original component that he bid did allow him to make that change by identifying it in the bid, but he did agree, in spite of that, he did agree to change to the one that was specifically designed.
The bid specs allowed him to alter the specifications a little bit, as long as he provided the information, which he did, so everything was right on that. It's just, if we really want that other component in there, he said he would honor the same price.
How long have we had that problem?
Oh, it's been nickel and dime in the police department for three or four years, I think. And, and so, yeah.
Hopefully take care of that problem for...
For 20 years.
We'll see if you...
Yeah. I mean, that one, that one was put in in 2000, so...
Seems like it should be a lot longer, 20 years, but that's...
Seems like it.
Go by fast. That's real quick. This time does go by fast, for a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah. Good.
Okay, any other comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Raven?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
I motioned to approve Council Decision Request 2024-2456, approving change order number two from Fuller Wenti Inc. by deducting the water main and casing directional boring and adding 1,250 feet of water main and trenching for the US 45 Water Main Project, and authorizing the Public Works Director to sign change order number two.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen, and any comments?
I'm gonna let Alex comment if he wants, otherwise I will, but Alex is joining us tonight in place of Dave, so I want to give him the opportunity to speak if he wants to.
So, instead of boring under Route 45 and then there 1100, that painting was put in in 1970s. We were looking to fully replace the thing that was put in in 1920s, extend it south to roughly all the 30 area.
So, the line that we've been having a lot of problems with wasn't completely getting replaced. You know, with the bad sections was getting replaced, but we're gonna go ahead and replace that further south in lieu of some underneath 45 that was built in 1970 and we hadn't had any issues with.
Okay, good deal.
I will say this is a pretty good, I will say this is a pretty good catch by Alex and his guys, and a good change on behalf of the city, that's for sure.
Yes.
They're good. Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Raven?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve Council Decision Request 2024-2457, approving the water service ring adjustment to around $1,036.39 on behalf of Evelyn Cell, located at 1620 Frostwood Avenue.
Okay, a second on that motion.
A second, Ed.
Commissioner Clausen, and any comments on this? We've got some new people here. Explain why we're waving that, Sandy or whoever.
We wanted to state that any adjustment for $1,000 backwards has to be approved by the council. You know, I remember, I think this was a situation. This is, the adjustment was just over a thousand, but we haven't still managed to.
Okay. So, I mean, this is a fairly routine thing that we do, and people have an unusual thing like this would cost so much. Try to help the citizens, all right. Any other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Dave.
Uh, roll call.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Raven?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Now, we go into the department reports, starting with City Administrator Kyle Gill.
Been mainly working on getting some of this stuff ready for the agenda items this last week. Again, looking at some of the bids for the chiller this week, spent some time on that. Been working on budgets with Beth, been working on, yeah, union negotiations with Public Works and Alex and, uh, so, and Dave, so it, uh, been very busy, not enough hours in the day, but it's been going well. I mean, everything's busy, but we're getting a lot accomplished, and, and all the department heads are helping out every way they can, and things seem to be going really well.
Good. Any questions for Kyle? Uh, City Attorney Dan Jones is not here tonight for personal reasons. Any, any report, anything, anybody have anything? Do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
All right. Then we move to City Clerk Susan O'Brien.
Just business as usual.
Okay. Any questions for Susan? Finance Beth Wright?
There for the government. And so I updated this today. Three new items that were disappointing. Utility tax, the mushroom boundary, um, is down. Energy gain tax, for this month is down. And personal property tax for this month is also down. So, to date, we're down from the year prior, 563,786. And our last meeting in the gap was just over 1,000.
Good.
Secondly, I wanted to say a word about the local debt recovery program that we're dealing with the water and sort of that. This is where the state will try to match people's tax refunds with that city. And the program about five months now, and it's now fighting season for taxes. So, the matches that they made on our DCA thus far, $8,825. They do give people an opportunity to protest that, so there's a bit of time before we actually get to that. And Sarah Rainford has been doing a terrific job submitting information. The emergency cash and the general fund, I'm too happy, 111857, 779. Yeah, but our last meeting, 12,350, 352. We haven't really seen any shared revenue sales tax there just yet, so it bunches ways every two.
Good.
I've been busy with budget work. And so, so far, I'm not having the grocery tax. She, you know, come to...
Right.
And that's all I had to report.
Any questions for Beth?
Beth, is that, that grocery, is that listed on her sales tax, the grocery tax? Okay.
Another quick question. We are down a little bit on revenues. Is that caused, and we're, and we're in the budget process right now, but caused to adjust anything on the budget? Are you concerned about that?
I'm there adjusting utility tax down there and personal property tax down. I think that our video game budget there was $66.
Yeah.
She needs to be back. Another month left, maybe $47,000.
Yeah.
Should be okay with that. I should have to hear.
Good. All right. Any other questions for Beth? Next is Public Works, and Alec Fuqua is gonna tell us about what's going on in Public Works.
I'm going through the road, what plans for the sports complex night. This will hopefully go out Thursday, I believe, that will be returned by March 28th. So, you guys should be able to load on people, that's I believe, for a bit somewhere.
Yeah, first one.
Up Church is in the process of serving for the sanitary sewer, going to the sports complex starting this week. And Fuller will be starting on Route 45 Water Main, water.
I understand you're also starting the inventory of lead piping in the city, which is gonna be a long process. Uh, we're looking for some help, trying to get some money for, to get that completed, is that right?
Sure.
Okay. Anything else anybody has?
That's all.
Okay, Fire Chief?
Yes, good. I could tell to the, the roadwork around the complex, the, what's the bits approved? Uh, they're trying to, same phases, but they're wanting to open the second phase, I believe, by October.
Yeah, I think September, actually.
So, that's, speaking of the roadway, which is like right up to that level, it'd be in the summer. It's probably, it's supposed to be down by September. That's what I hear.
Yeah. Phase one is Fort Worth Way extended around where the new shopping center would be. I think the, the goal is they are turning that shopping center over to those tenants in September, so... Right. So, they want to be able to have that road in place by, by then. And then part of it behind there is well behind Home Depot and, and this little strip going to the indoor facility. So, all of it is gonna be done during the construction, but they need to focus on a certain area first, and then...
Sure.
They get it done faster, then they can work on the other areas as well, so...
Visibly, it's real gonna start taking shape at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Fire Chief Jeff Hilligoss?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, luckily, congratulations, Pierce. For the second, that is, congratulations. Uh, since the last meeting, the accident, 134 calls for service. Inspectors did form inspections and follow-ups, training. They've been pretty busy doing their art training, rescue, and then they also took light fire drills. Trying to get the room to be a very young department. Um, July, when I was my three senior captains, who were half of the department, like three years or less. So, I've tasked the captains with doing a lot of additional training to while they're still here. And they, they rose to that, uh, every day, additional stuff. Our new truck is in. The guys are, I believe, still over there fitting it, putting everything on it. Tomorrow, I'll be registering it with the state for ALS non-transport. So, hopefully, it will be in service next week. Then it'll still have to go back down to, uh, in order to get that front bumper replaced. But they're anticipating that that will take two days. So, I'll, but hopefully, it'll be sitting out on, on the streets next week.
Yes.
That is all I got. If I have any questions.
Okay. You do have a great department, the fire, just so, I, I would agree with that. But of the two chiefs that we have, we go to the best chief we have, and that would be... That would be...
We got started one with James, it was...
Well, we share, we share. So, Chief Sam Gaines.
Yes. And congratulations, Pierce, for, for, for sure. Stay in shape, you're gonna be pretty good. Alex, you should feel pretty good as the chief of the third best department in the city. Best department, coming in second.
But it's a close second, it's real close.
Close second.
You know?
It takes luck for the third best department to acknowledge that. Anyway, you can tell it's warming up, calls are up. We had 1,046 calls in the last two weeks, 55 different for the rest. That, that's your report, unless anyone has any questions.
Good. Any questions for Sam? The best arts and tourism department we have, Angelia. Angela Hip, yes.
Um, so we're working on, here, bagel fest, lightworks, fireworks, all at the same time. There's lots of things happening with this part of those. Uh, working on getting an estimate for building lights for the rest of downtown, see what else we can do. One of the big announcements we made this week was Bagel Bites, which we did last year. And we're adding, we have three dates this year, and we have our bands booked. And we're also adding some artisans and vendors to the, to the Bagel Bites. We're calling it Bagel Bites in Mattoon, in order to expand on the concept a little bit. So, we have April 26th, May 17th, and June 2nd date.
Nice. Can't make any announcements on the...
I can tell you it's coming to Bagel Bites, I can't tell you it's coming to Bagel Fest.
Okay.
But soon.
Okay. But it's gonna be out, another outstanding... Okay. What's, what's to start with? What's the first word?
One of the words, something else.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Do, uh, do you expand a little bit on the, like, some people may not know what the plan is for building lights, and it's exciting for the downtown area.
Yeah, so, our first phase, so to speak, was Mattoon Depot, and then, of course, that first block on the north and south side. The idea is to take them two blocks to the east and then another block to the west, and then also extending an additional block down to slightly to western avenue, to, uh, do here is in that area. So, the idea of being, really making that very, very soon. And they'll run off of one, one control, so they'll all be the same, and there'll be a system. Yeah.
Exciting.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Okay, any questions for Angelia? Uh, community development, Alex, you been doing anything?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, tell us what you're doing.
Uh, yes, speaking with things. So, we got the cameras up for the sports complex, I left. Uh, I was very humbled in that experience. I actually put one of them up myself, but it turned out to be very interesting. But thank you to TJ, you know, for helping us out with that. We submitted Chicago region tree, and they came to us and said we should apply. It's $150,000, no match from the city for tree planting, it's not in disadvantaged areas. I mean, early, the sports complex, dog park, and big trail all qualify for those areas, so huge opportunity to save money for the city. Been there last week, went to the 35th Annual World Community Economic Development Conference. Lot of great information from the city of Marion, residential tips, and also learned a ton about historic revitalization and its credits. You can pay for up to 45% of a project at the $3 million if your property is on the National Register of Historic Places, so huge opportunities for us for development. Also spoke with some folks at Illinois Extension, they're here to do some community development and revitalization talks with us and workshops with community members. Were there, East St. Alum with Development Corporation meeting, did pretty well. Lakeland College presented about their English as a second language programs. They had about 27 different spots. Great example of, you know, the value that engaging with that specific population we come up with is, you know, there's a, somebody that works at Lakeland College right now, is a custodian, that has a veterinarian's license. I can tell you, like, I still, that right now, he's an additional person. So, it's like, how do we connect qualified people that already exist in our community to that resource? So, really fascinating stuff coming to Lakeland. I did want to talk about electronic billboards briefly, so we've had a number of groups reach out to us, and I, during my first month here, kind of wrote a proposal for council to potentially alter that ordinance. I'll be sending it out to council again after this meeting. Just get back to us about that if you wouldn't mind, just so we can kind of get them an answer on whether or not that'll be changed or if it's wrong. But moving from there, got a demolition permit for 1520 Shelby, the trailer park there. They were moving forward units, so that was just approved today. And then finished the bid for our IAF grant, working on the poslet bid, so that's very exciting. Uh, our housing study through Partner Valuation Advisors is gonna be finished on April 26th. That's incredibly exciting for the community, it's gonna allow us to figure... That's, that's incredibly exciting for communities, gonna allow us to figure out what types of housing we need, how to finance it moving forward. And finally, uh, our council town ball will be next week, March fourteen at six P.M. at Elevate. Uh, you know, Harley, hungry, everyone's catering, everybody in this room, and everybody listening to this community, that is absolutely exciting. Uh, but that's all I got.
So how do we get the word out, uh, with the housing meeting? Uh, Elevate is, has its limited space, you know, two hundred people show up, you're gonna be in the bind, aren't you?
We'll figure it out, uh, so, you know, I've talked with, uh, the mall and they're, they're able to prepare for about a hundred and fifty in that space. Uh, and so if we go above that, right now I got fifty RSPPs. Uh, but we have been paying, uh, like a dollar a day for Facebook ads, uh, really to get that information there. So I'm expecting at least a hundred.
Right.
I'll take fifty.
Right, right. Yeah, Angela, have you got that on your list of things on the calendar for, you do? Good. All right, all right, so, any, any questions for Alex? Uh, next is, uh, comments by the council. And, uh, I'm gonna leave the best for last, that means I get to go first, by the way. Uh, we are, uh, just a couple of things I've been working on. I'm on the search committee for the Coles Together President and CEO. We've done a national, uh, search for that position. Uh, well, we, we should have that filled within the next thirty days. We'll have a candidate that we're gonna make an offer to. We've had a lot of good responses, some outstanding experienced people, uh, so that's going well. Um, we, we are reviewing a lot of, a second phase of the sports complex, looking at a lot of things. It's been mentioned, uh, roads, uh, you know, uh, modifications of some of the fields. There's a lot of things that were, uh, a lot of things we're looking at right now. And, uh, to get ready for, for phase two, we've talked about bonds and the rates and, you know, just a lot of things. So we are going through another phase here, there's still work to get done. But, uh, the project, uh, as everybody has seen, the steel's up, uh, in both the locations where the strip mall is and also the indoor facility, and, and you're gonna see a lot more changes out there. The roofs are on, uh, and for all intensive purposes, all the major steel's up. Uh, there's siding going up now on both facilities, so. At the strip mall, I think this, except for just a couple thousand square feet is totally, uh, called, it, it's filled. We got contracts for it, so that, that, that all is going well. Last thing I'm gonna say, uh, getting ready to attend, uh, Illinois Municipal League Board of Directors meeting on the April seventeenth and eighteenth. It's a group that does a lot for our cities, uh, that's also legislative day. We will get a chance to meet with our legislators at the state level to, to, to try to help us through some issues. Uh, we're facing one right now, the biggest one that we're facing right now is, is a reduction in, um, well, the elimination of, of, uh, sales, the one percent sales tax on food, uh, it's a great idea. Uh, I don't think probably anybody's opposed to it, except that the only beneficiary of that money is the cities. It's two hundred and thirty-five billion dollars to cities that will be taken out. For us, it means four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That if we lose that, we're gonna have to figure out a way to replace it with eighty percent of our cost and labor. If we lose four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that means we're gonna have to reduce positions. So hopefully the state in their wisdom is gonna replace that money for us. And they've done that before, but it will have an impact on literally every city in Illinois if we lose that money. And, uh, we, we gotta figure out a way, uh, to, uh, recover that. The budgets aren't approved at the state level yet. I know the Illinois Municipal League is working very hard to come up with a solution. There are some ideas out there, so it's, again, it's just something that we go through all, all the time. Uh, but that's kind of what's going, so I'm, I'm done. So Dave Cox, I want you to go second.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Pierce, congratulations, welcome to the city. Uh, you know, I really appreciate you, you were worried about being a part of it and, and continuing to be a part of the community, giving back. You're going into a great department with a very good culture, good guys here. I think you have fit in really well, uh, and do a lot of great things in your career, so I wish you the best.
Thanks so much.
Um, and, well, it's a belt, but I am.
No go-backs, you know, you, 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 okay, all right. Commissioner Raven, what have you got for us?
Uh, just congratulations, welcome aboard.
Okay, Commissioner Clausen?
Uh, Pierce, congratulations and congratulations to a great family, there's your mom and dad here. Really reflection of how you're raised, so. Had a meeting last week, uh, with Superintendent Holman at the wastewater treatment plant, just, uh, kind of see where we're at, uh, both short term, I think Alex, you know, a lot of this, uh, projects in the next year or so. And then maybe down the road, what the major concerns are gonna be with that department is, I think it's next year, about three quarters of the operations down there are over fifty years of age, so just trying to get ahead of that a little bit, so.
Good deal.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Jim? Um, Commissioner Phipps, you got anything to say?
Well, sure, I always have something to say, whether it's good or bad. Being, being I'm the commissioner of the number one department in the city. Number one and number two, right, because we have sewer, uh, and.
Sewer's always a number one department.
Sewer, well, sometimes number two, but, uh, anyway, without, without, uh, without the water, we wouldn't have water to fight fires and cool, cool towers for the police. So anyway, that's, that's, sorry, Alex, I had to plug you some, somehow. Um, welcome, uh, Mr. Farmer and, uh, Mr. Hannis, uh, to the team. Um, I was able to go to the annual, uh, Rural Community Economic Development Conference last, last week as well. Lot of great initiatives coming out of there and look forward to maybe discussing some of those with, uh, Dave and Alex and of course, uh, of course Kyle, uh, over the next six to eight months here, so. Other than that, uh, I have nothing.
Okay, any questions? All right, um, before we go into recess for closed session, I would like for, Pierce, to just stick around for just a minute. People would like to congratulate you personally before we, before you rush out of here. And we're gonna, so next, we're gonna go into, um, a recess to closed session pursuant to Illinois Open Meetings Act for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the city or legal counsel for the city under five I L C S one twenty, two C one, and collective negotiation matters between the city of Mattune and its employees or the representatives or deliberation concerning salary schedules for one or more class of employees under five I L C S one twenty, two C two. And, uh, we need a second on this to go to.
Second, Mayor.
Commissioner Cox and roll call.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Raven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
He's not gonna be.
Commissioner Phipps?
He's muted.
Okay. He can't go in there anyway. Away, can you?
Yeah, I'm mute, Commissioner Phipps.
I need you to shut the brag, don't he?
Okay, uh, one, that one more.
Okay, Mayor Hall?
Yes, and when we reconvene after this, uh, closed session, we will not take any action on anything. You're, you're welcome to stay and wait till we get out. It could be ten minutes or an hour before we get back in here. So, uh, we're gonna go to executive session right now and you should just stick around for a second.
All right, I am going to mute at this time and pause the recording.
See, anybody still there?
Uh, looks like Phipps might still be there.
Oh, yeah. You bet.
Back in session?
Yes. Anybody else want to discuss anything else? Anybody like to adjourn?
Yeah. We make much.
I make that motion.
Second?
All right. Didn't know you guys were waiting over here.
Roll call.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Raven? Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're done, thank you.